Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Erickson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Kressel.
Clatt.
Here.
Fedbrutton.
Here.
Melby.
Here.
Jertie.
Here.
It is time for the open forum. Anyone who would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, they come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please.
Yes, Spanxton 215th Avenue South. I'm here on behalf of Oxcart Days just to do a public thank you to the city staff, city crews for all of your hard work this week or this last week on Oxcart Days. We had such a phenomenal week, such good turnouts at all of our events, record-breaking attendance at some of the events. It was, everybody that I've talked to was just so happy with the gatherings and everything that was going on, so just wanted to publicly say thank you to everybody and thanks for everybody that came in this room as well. It was fun. I'm tired.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ashley.
Chad, is there anyone waiting on the city's phone bridge?
Please enter your password, password. Age is locked in. There is no one on the bridge.
Would you please sign off of the city's phone bridge?
Please enter your password. Age is locked out. Bridge is closed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have one presentation tonight. City of Crookston Merrill proclamation to declare August 25th, 2021 as Janine Windows Day. Whereas Janine was past president and CEO of the Crookston Area Chamber of Commerce for 13 years, retiring in June 2006. In that capacity, she directed the Crookston Convention and Visitor Bureau, United Way, the Oxcart Festival. She initiated a partnership with the Minnesota Tourism to operate the Fisher's Landing Information Center. And whereas Janine also had been a 30-year member of the Crookston Lions, she has served in various leadership roles, including past president of the Crookston Lions and district governor in 2009 and 10 for the 5M11 Conference. Her current role has been serving as secretary since 2006. She was elected to the Minnesota District 5M Lions Hall of Fame in 2014. And whereas Janine has served on other Crookston organizations throughout her career, which included Toastmasters, Lenmore Foundation Board, Trinity Lutheran Welka Board, Red River Valley Shows Board, UMC Women Association, Crookston United Way Board, and was the first female Trinity Lutheran Church Congressional President. She also served in various leadership roles on other boards and organizations throughout Northwest Minnesota. Now therefore, I Dale Stamper, Mayor of the City of Crookston, do hereby proclaim August 25th, 2021 as Janine Windows Day. Testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Crookston, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim August 25th, 2021 as Janine Windows Day. One quick little note here. August 25th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., there will be an open house. Let's see. Joined with everyone in our community for the open house honoring Janine Windows on Wednesday, August 25th, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., there will be a program at 5:00. Janine is moving to the Twin Cities and we'd like to wish her well and thank her for many years of volunteerism, service, and dedication to our community. We'll miss you, Janine. Doesn't say where the open house is?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian is gonna accept this, Janine couldn't be here tonight?
He's sitting next to her. I don't know where that guy is.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We'll go with Tom. Discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Fedbrutton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you, Delane. Is there a second? By Don, thank you. Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Fedbrutton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jertie.
Okay, this has a public hearing tonight. Ashley.
Yes, Your Honor. Item 7.01 is a public hearing on the support for New Flyer of America Incorporated, expansion of Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DEED, and the Minnesota Investment Fund Incentive MIF Program, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll open this public hearing. If anyone would like to address the council, please come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We do have David Rhodey, the New Flyer plant manager, here with us tonight, and he has prepared a presentation for you and an explanation of the project if you would like to hear what he has to say.
Sure.
Okay. David, podium's just over here, and I think Chad's got your slides up.
Thank you. Again, good evening. I'm David Rhodey, I'm the plant manager of New Flyer of America here in Crookston, Minnesota. I've been with New Flyer in Crookston for the last two and a half years. The New Flyer of America group in Crookston, the facility here, which is approximately 225 employees, well, 245 direct employees with a headcount of around 270 employees, has traditionally built large transit buses. So the transit buses we produce are for like intercity transit buses. This year, or due to some changes in our organizational structure, we were provided the opportunity to look at transitioning the fabrication of MCI motor coaches from our Pembina, North Dakota location to Crookston. So traditionally, like you said, traditionally, the facility here in Crookston produces, on average, 20 transit bus coaches per week. And the intent, and it's quite an honor for the organization to actually consider the transition to Crookston. And really, the ability to have this opportunity is a testament to the focus that the organization has, this employee group that we have here, that builds a really high-quality and consistent bus. And so the transition of this MCI motor coach allows the opportunity to move, create 35 jobs here in Crookston, and it allows us the opportunity for the first time in well over 20 years to be able to expand the footprint of our location here in Crookston. And I'm not sure how we talk on the slides.
Just point your finger back at Chad.
So, the objective of the plan was to create a plan that enables New Flyer of America in Crookston to establish a mixed model production line, enabling the construction of the excel- excel-trade of bus along with the MCI CRT motor coaches on a common manufacturing line. And this has not been done or proven successful in any New Flyer group organization. So the scope of the project is to complete up the three CRT shelves per week in 2021 and expand that capability to five, or by two different levels, to five meters forward in 2022. The CRT shelf will be built out of our existing production line, and the project plan is to accommodate a total of 20 buses per week. So what we have for deliverables, we as New Flyers, we have to validate that we can efficiently create around a flex line in Crookston. We have to validate the space requirements, we have to look at material flow, off-line processes, and all of that. So we perform a gap analysis on our existing facility and infrastructure. We determine that additional facility space would be required to support the MCI product transition, and we develop a product budget to perform a return on analysis investment. So in order to show the corporation the return on investment and be able to get them to commit to this, this project overall is about $6.8 million, $6.87 million in capital expense here for the Crookston location. So we need to get complete bid taxes for this expansion, okay? Next slide, please. So through that, we looked at what are some options we have, and we worked with Amy and the company in regards to evaluating some of these opportunities. So we looked at purchasing additional land. This is our current, what we call customer acceptance building, as long as the sole bodily facility here in Crookston. And right now, as a factory, we lack the additional square footage required to bring in some additional capability. And so the first thing we did is we looked at buying some land, okay? Next slide, please. We also looked at, I approached these trucks and said, hey, is there any interest in selling us that location, okay? And we were unable to solidify a first agreement with them, so that option was eliminated, okay? Next slide, please. So here, we looked at our own facility and said, okay, we can expand our existing facility by 12,000 square feet, and this is the option that was selected. And so that was, that was how we ended up launching this product, per se. Move forward, please. So what this building would look like is it would be a 75 by 150 square foot building. We put a six over eight doors. We needed to have larger doors. So what happens is our Fort Gary facility actually produces these coach, coaches, and they actually are shipped down here, no different than the transit bus, the MCI coaches would then come to us on a flatbed trailer, and we would have to be able to process them to the plant. Due to some water runoff issues and just the overall elevation with utilities and all that, there need to be some modifications to natural landscape there to be able to accommodate this addition. So there were some initial costs associated with having the back of the hill be three foot lower. We had to do some different paving and all that to be able to store water runoff, and then we needed to do some additional things to ensure the state. When we're dealing with larger coaches, these 60-foot coaches, if you look at the height of the current street as it relates to the building, you have to have a certain approach angle in order for that bus to have enough ground for it to be able to get into the facility. So there was a number of issues that had to be overcome as part of selecting this option. Next slide. So in this additional space, we need to have the capability of doing things that we traditionally hadn't done. With the MCI motor coaches, there's a certain requirement as far as processes you have to go through in order to build a bus. So we needed an HVAC booth, right? And the HVAC booth is used for testing the ability to draw down the temperature of the coach. So there's a specification when you build a bus, that you have to bring it to a certain temp, and you have to prove that you are able to lower that temp at a certain period of time. Same thing, it gets cold here in Minnesota, you have to be able to raise the internal temp of that bus. We also need to use it, we needed to install a dynamometer. So there's a deceleration requirement as far as how quickly that coach has to be able to prove that it stops. And these are all requirements to safety standards. We need to be able, these buses have, the MCI coaches have very dramatic detailing packages. We had to be able to do wraps and make the bus look pretty great. We also needed to have a different alignment stuff. The transit buses, we only have to align the front steering ax. On an MCI motor coach, you have to align all three axes requiring different capability. And then we also had to have, these buses are kind of sophisticated when it comes to cameras, and so there needed to be additional combinations made to be able to, because you have to show camera views of all the different camera angles to ensure that you have a safety and compliant bus. So that was the process we went through. Next slide, please. So this is just sort of a schematic of what the plan would look like and what we're looking to put into it. Moving on, please. So in this, our initial return on investment calculation, when we estimated the cost of a truck, we were estimating about $200 per square foot. When we ended up actually getting our first go-around bids, and we were working with Winst up here in town, when we got our initial rounds of bids, the actual bids came in over $300 for a square foot. So the cost to construct and the overall return on investment calculation was flawed. And so now there was an issue with our ability to get or achieve the desired return on investment. So from there, we performed value engineering. So we worked with our general contractors to work on the means of being able to try to reduce that, that cost per square foot to construct. And again, some of the things we've seen is a lot of these times with steel, so anybody that's wanting to do an expansion, we've seen mining prices have overall increased, labor's really tight. So through value engineering, we were able to drop our cost to $200 per square foot. That was a value engineer to save $300. We changed the type of steel that we were using. So we ended up changing the aesthetics of the building in order to help bring down the cost. So through that, we, you know, and then we eliminated some additional warehouse space that we really wanted, but we realized we couldn't afford it. In that, then in talking with Amy, looking at partnering with MND in the city of Crookston, we were applying for this bid application that would be in the form of $128,000 for doable grant, the potential BDPI involvement as well of $128,000. And through that, we were able to meet the requirements of the return on investment for the New Flyer group overall. Next slide, please. I think that would be the end, actually. So with this, what this potential does is, for one thing, it's unique that we're actually able to take jobs from North Dakota and actually move them to Minnesota. So what we've done through this process is we've committed to, to creating a minimum of 35 new jobs here in Crookston over the next year to year and a half. So that's, that's a big part of this. And so what it does is, by demonstrating this capability, it solidifies, again, New Flyer started in Crookston, it allows us to expand our employee base, it allows us to add new jobs, it allows additional capabilities on this factory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll close this public hearing. Okay, this brings us to the regular agenda. Ashley.
Your Honor, item 8.01 is a resolution to approve the support for the New Flyer of America Incorporated expansion, Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, DEED, Minnesota Investment Fund Investment MIF Program.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Absolutely, Your Honor.
I'll second it. Got Delane and Don. Thank you. Discussion.
I think it's gonna be a great asset.
I think you're quick.
Yep, I agree.
I think it's, I will state, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is the city's first MIF application that we've partnered with an applicant, but Minnesota DEED has been a good partner in walking us through that. It is a nice way to be able to help support some of that expansion and job growth here in our community. We had, we have some upfront work to do with the application. It's our duty to review financials and do some things as we turn in the minutes for the public hearing as a requirement. So the city had some things we had to do, but, oh, but it's a really nice way to be able to support that expansion and some of our local industry and bring jobs here to our community.
Is there, is there a timeline when they will know if they get this awarded to them or not?
We will turn in, I do not know the answer to that. I don't think it'll be a real long turnaround once we get everything submitted. Would you agree with that, David?
I would suspect that we'll have a response to their application in the next couple of weeks. What's happened is Amy and I have been working, well, Amy and the whole team behind us have worked very, very hard on the process, because the application is fairly lengthy, with a number of critical milestones or objectives you have to achieve. And so that, this work has been going on for probably north of three months. It's been going on for quite some time. And they've already received the application, and so they've had an opportunity to review it. This public hearing is the final box that has to be checked prior to them, then evaluating, formally evaluating the application.
When would you start on the expansion?
Expansion has already started. So, yeah, so if you've not been up that way, we've actually had to shut down the street. There's, yeah, we actually started on July 6th. We actually began the construction. And, yeah, so we've, we're starting to try to produce those coaches now in Crookston, but we're limited on what we're capable of fully doing without this expansion. So this expansion will continue to increase the volume and be able to add the jobs and all the other things we're trying to do.
Councilman Fedbrutton, there's a few different ways that the MIF can be structured. This particular application is to assist with equipment purchases, so they can't actually pay an invoice until their MIF application is approved. So that puts them in where they can do some things, but certain things are tied to that award. So I believe there's some, there's construction I think you can tie it to, but the equipment's a little bit easier, tighter your route to go. So that's how we've moved forward with this application in conjunction with New Flyer.
Was there a forgivable loan from DEED?
It is, yes.
What was, what was the, what was the forgivable loan? How much was that for?
We're looking at $280.
Okay. Just wanted to know.
And they base that, Councilmember Cavalier, on, it's, it's really driven by number of jobs created, is how Minnesota DEED looks at that. So there's a lot of work that has to be put in and preliminary discussions to even have an idea about where you're landing. And they kind of help guide you through that and make sure you have an eligible project. So that's how they determine that amount. Once you submit your preliminary information, they come back to you with some options. And the forgivable loan amount of $280 was what would be most helpful for New Flyer and was a way that the city can support that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Fedbrutton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jertie.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on.
Item 8.02 is a resolution to approve dispensing and consumption of untaxicating liquor and dance permit on the premises at Crookston and parking lot, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second? There's a second by, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Is there a certain time? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there a certain time hour-wise?
Yes. From 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. Yeah. That, that was part of the application. We've incorporated that into the resolution as well.
So, the question I have is, is, is this process supposed to be as difficult? Is it?
No.
Okay.
If I could take a minute, there's a couple of things I would like to publicly explain and then make a commitment on behalf of city staff. It really should not be this difficult. There is confusion, and it's understandable why there, there are some dance permits that you see and why others require a special application. The others fall under the community festivals, and it's a little bit different. And one, our application process in itself is a bit cumbersome for both applicants and city staff. We are committing publicly to all of you that we are already working on that. There needs to be some updates to a lot of our ordinances. One of them is this particular ordinance, also with our liquor ordinances, they just need to be brought up to date. The League of Minnesota Cities does offer some models to look at. So you start with that, and then you just need to look and make sure things that are specific to your city and your community are incorporated, or if any changes need to be made. One thing we need to do is define community festival. The statute does not define community festival, and I have looked at some models that I think are appropriate, that would come before you in an ordinance amendment, but defining it as a social gathering for arts, so very much a dance and a band would fit into that. And it allows you to be flexible for the needs of your community. So we've got some work to do. Ordinance changes do take a little bit of time. You have to research, you need to make sure that what you're finding as a model, that you're incorporating what's right for Crookston. Need to come before you for a first introduction, there's publications, and then a vote for the council at the end. So there's a lot of work we have, some of just our licenses and our applications need to be revamped and made a little bit easier for both sides. This is one of them. And then this one also kind of ties in with the liquor ordinances, which we will be working on. Ashley and I have downloaded that. We have some notes from prior discussions just after I started, so we will be moving those through. I committed to Lori and Craig and Rob that we would be making this easier. We acknowledge this process is not ideal. So we thank them for kind of tumbling through that with us and getting here so that we can do better next time.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I recall from days gone past, there used to be a lot of teen dances and that type of thing in, in town. And there used to be other dances, like upstairs at the VFW and, and different places. The whole idea of this dance permit was, it wasn't to make any funds, it was to let the police chief know what nights there was gonna be extra activities in town, and to look at it, if there was alcohol involved, if there was, you know, a different ethnic group, or if it was this or that. And it gave him a reason to say, oh, we need to have more help on hand that night, whether it be a State Eagles convention, or, you know, that type of thing. And so that's why they had that form.
Yeah.
And so it, it used to be pretty simple. I was kind of surprised that, that it was made a little more difficult, but that was the idea.
Certainly, the, the aspect of serving and consuming alcoholic liquor outside always adds a little bit of heightened scrutiny, and it should. And I agree with you, I'm glad you made that point, Councilmember Melby, that the purpose of licensing anything for the city is not to get rich, because generally speaking, you're probably not even covering your wages, but that's kind of the purpose. The fee should be enough to hopefully cover some of the labor going into it, but it really is to put the city on notice and be able to allocate any necessary resources that we need to, to keep everyone safe and orderly, and hopefully there's no-
So that they say, back when they had those teen dances and that, part of the contract that you signed or the permit was that you made an expectation of how many folks you think are gonna be there, and then you had to hire auxiliary police or other people in order to have, you know, maintain orderly conduct. So that was all included in that, so I don't know if there's still any of those old-
I believe that's all probably still in there. And we did communicate with our police chief and made sure that the proposed area, he was comfortable with, with his officers, and so we did kind of go through those internal discussions and feel like we are ready for you to vote on this. Staff feels like we have what we need as far as insurance, we have their site maps and their, we have reviewed their licensed premises and feel like we have what we need as a city, and just ask for your consideration to approve that, that dance permit.
So, one quick question, and I understand the liquor license, or, there's boundaries within the liquor license, so are most liquor license on contain the parking lot, or do they not? And if, if the liquor license does not include the park, or if it did include the parking lot, would they have to come and get a special?
Dance permit.
Do this?
I think it would be like a dance permit. They already have the license to serve alcohol.
I would say we wouldn't probably, as a city, want people just wandering about in parking lots, but especially with COVID and the outdoor dining, there were some that submitted their most recent site premises drawing to include parts of their parking lot, so that they could offer tables in an area. I don't know that we have that real clearly defined, but certainly a boundary you wouldn't want someone running all about, but-
I understand, I understand that. So, I mean, if, if, for example, if a liquor license did include the parking lot, that would allow people to just go outside and wander around, is that, is that what you're saying?
It could. That would also make it difficult on the license holder's staff to monitor that. In this case, they will have a, a specific area, and they'll have someone checking patrons coming in and out for age and, and those things. And I believe no one under 21 will be inside of that area, so they'll be monitoring that.
Okay. Do they, do they have to put on extra patrol for this or not, or?
I don't believe so, Chief.
You know, like a festival or whatever, they don't have to do that then, since they're private park?
And they're under, they're under the 400 expected participants.
Push your button.
For this, no, especially when all the pre-work has gone into it that has been talked about, it's all laid out, and there's, I mean, there's some restrictions on movement and that kind of stuff, but no. We're good with that.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, sounds good.
Further discussion. Hearing none, let's have roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Venn Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on.
Item 8.03 is a resolution to approve the Minnesota Department of Transportation Joint Powers Contract for Professional and Technical Services, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie. Um, Amy will give us a brief update.
Yes. Up on the wall, just for a reminder, we've got the map of the MinDOT corridor study route, if you will. This joint powers agreement we agreed to enter into when we accepted MinDOT's contribution. And then if you'll remember, they did come back when our bids came back in a little bit higher and kicked in an additional amount. This is just finalizing that agreement. We do have SRF, the consultant that we chose to carry out the study. Their contract is ready to go, but it does incorporate the MinDOT joint powers agreement. That's what you have before you, just to get us going. And that allows our contractor and our consultant to start doing some of that work. We have a meeting coming up, I think, as a kickoff meeting in September, so.
And this funds was coming out of, out of where?
I'm sorry?
The funds were coming out of where?
I believe we said those would come out of general fund. Yeah, our share.
Do you know what's in the general fund?
Do I know what's in the general fund?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it's in reserves. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I believe it's over $2 million right now, so sufficient to cover our share of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Venn Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.04 is a resolution to approve the ICE time agreement with the Blue Line Club, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
Second by Don. Thank you. Amy.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm flipping through my papers.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm there, I'm there. All right. Um, I will give just a brief explanation. This came in to me and I've been busy with budget, but what you have in front of you is a proposal to leave cost at the same as what was before council in September of 2020 for three weeks in September. It outlines dates and times. This year was a little bit earlier on the request to get ICE in, so that's reflected for the 10th. Last year I did notice there were some other terms that were included prior that weren't. We have that reincorporated on here. I did send a letter, which Mayor and Council have seen a copy of, to the president of the Blue Line Club. Because of the time this year to need to get this done so that we can get ICE in and get this contract done, we did not move forward, but there are some amendments I think that we need to look at in the master offseason ICE time agreement with Blue Line Club. And so this will give us some time to begin working on that after the first of the year and communicate with the Blue Line Club president and board members to work something out to bring back before you. One thing I do want to note, I believe it was in 2017, there was discussion at a Ways and Means meeting that there was an intent by the council at that time to recapture some tournament fees to help offset the lower rental charge. I do think we will need to find some sort of arrangement and bring you some options to look at on how to close that gap a little bit. And we will get some good calculations for you, discuss that with Blue Line Club as we move forward. But right now we are not, I don't see it in the master agreement, and then I do not see that we're bringing in any revenue from the tournament fees. So we need to find some sort of arrangement on the charge to close that gap a little bit on what it costs us to provide that ICE. And so we will be working on that prior to the next time we need to renew.
So they're looking for ICE time from September 10th to October 3rd then?
Yes.
And then October 3rd is when we take over as far as ICE out there, right?
I see Scott but nodding his head, so yes.
Okay. Further discussion. Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Venn Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item, item 8.05 is a resolution to approving the Park and Recreation to Purchase a Ventrack Slope Mower, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Wayne. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion?
Remember one, one of them?
Um, Mayor and Council, I'm going to ask if Mr. Butt would please join us at the podium and answer any questions that you have.
Slope mower.
I'm, I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't hear your question. Um, have we ever had anything like that before?
Oh, we had a slope mower up until this spring and it, uh, the engine is locked up. And so what we're looking to do is replace that, um, because what we need to do is, is with our, with the mowing of the dykes and along the river, um, we're putting a lot of pressure on our big mowers and the back wheels on them, we're blowing hubs left and right. This gives us the opportunity to get into the sand and get the, uh, and get the stuff down closer to the river, the river bank so we can create more room. But we did have one up and, it was bought by Mike McDonald back when the dykes were first, first completed. That one was a bit, it was big, it was cumbersome. This is a lot smaller. We, we've actually, um, the company brought this up last year and let us use it for a day. And it is a, it's night and day between the two. This actually will cut the grass more like a regular mower, so on the dykes it'll have a better finished look. It is, um, something that from, with as much area as we use on, that we cut on the dykes, it's definitely something that we, we need to keep our, one, to keep going and get it done. Obviously this year we haven't needed it quite as much, but where we're getting into trouble now is the sandy soil because this will have the dual wheels and we're not able to get in and get close to the riverbed or the river edge.
Will this one just be used on the dykes then or?
Yeah, the plan is just to use it on the dykes.
I was seeing in there that you, uh, your option accessories, there was a, what was it, a additional lighting and signal package, but I didn't see that included in there. Should that something, be something that should be on there?
Well, I think it would be something that we could, but we can trailer it just as easy to the dykes.
Okay.
Um, but if you wanted to put it on there, we'd have no problem with it. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but, I mean, it's pretty easy just to put it on the trailer and, and run it over it and wherever we're going to start on the dykes.
Okay. Whatever you guys think is best. When I seen that option and it wasn't in there, I thought, well, if you're driving it up and down the street, you should maybe put that on there.
Well, you're, you know, it, it's one of those where it's a twofold situation. You take the time to put it on the trailer or do you just drive it along? Well, either, you know, it's half dozen of one, you know, so you just, we'll, for now, we'll just trailer it.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Venn Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Item 8.06 is a resolution to approve authorization to execute the Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement for the Airport Improvement Reel Excluding the Land.
Motion to approve this resolution.
So move, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Thank you. Amy?
Yes. Uh, we have talked about this project recently. We selected SEH as the consultant for this particular project. They were also later selected as our airport consultant. This is just MinDOT's agreement to get us going on that reels replacement. If you'll remember, MinDOT and the city both agreed that both ends actually needed to be replaced and MinDOT did come back with a little bit extra funds. I believe the initial offer was $30,000 and that was not enough to get both of them done. And they came back with an increase. I think our share is 19,000. We are waiting currently on some of our adjusting journal entries from our audit to determine where our airport reserves sit. It would be my recommendation if there's not airport reserves for that 19,000, that the general fund reserves would be appropriate.
Did you say if there's not enough in their reserves?
Right. We're waiting on some adjusting journal entries to see what that final number is.
If they do have reserves, say if we take it out of general fund now, we'll put it back in there then?
We should know, I think, before we would have to expense anything where that lands.
Okay.
Yeah.
Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Your Honor, did we get a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Venn Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Item 8.07 is a resolution to approve a letter of intent with Epitome Energy LLC, Your Honor.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tom, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Clayton, discussion. Amy, I think you've got a brief update on this one?
Yes. Um, Council and Mayor, I don't, I do not see Mr. Egan here today. I thought he would be, but, um, this letter of intent before you is a bridge, if you will. Dennis and Epitome Energy, in order to submit their air permitting, really need to have their land option agreement executed. The land option agreement that was before this council in May of 2020 called for a completed development agreement to be signed or executed concurrently with the land option. Mr. Egan and his team are not at that point yet to have a fully developed developers' agreement. In order to do that, you need to have your fully engineered plans and specifications. We would need to know what the city is agreeing to contribute or how, and we just haven't had those discussions yet. We don't have all of that information that we need. I was uncomfortable asking you to approve a land option agreement that essentially puts that land under the control of Epitome Energy without something. Something to, from, something formal from Epitome Energy to commit to the project and set some timelines. The timelines that you see in the letter of intent before you were provided by Mr. Egan and his counsel. You will see some of those timelines we carried over into the land option agreement per their provided timelines. One of those that will stand out is the December 31st of 2021. Their terms, I believe it's near the end. Let me flip here. Under number two, nope, that is not correct. Here we go. Number three, um, that the letter of intent will automatically terminate and be of no further force and effect upon the earlier of the execution of the development agreement, mutual agreement of the parties, and December 31st of 2021. So the purpose of the letter of intent was to close that gap between nothing and a developers' agreement. So we carried that December 31st, 2021 date into the land option agreement so that we should in theory be able to go from a letter of intent to a developers' agreement under that land option.
Is that going to give him enough time to do that?
Well, Councilmember Venn Bratton, I'm, I don't know the answer to that. That was the date that they provided to terminate the letter of intent.
They did?
They provided that, yes. Yep, the timelines that, all of the dates that you see in that letter of intent were provided by Mr. Egan and then in consultation with his legal counsel.
And this is enough so that they can continue with their air permitting then?
That's, they, yes. What this does, it allows him then to execute the land option agreement. He does need that land option agreement for MPCA as part of his submittal for the air permitting. Am I confident that December 31st of 2021 is enough time for a fully executed developers' agreement? I can't say that I am. But that was the date that Mr. Egan provided to let that letter, letter, letter of intent terminate either with a developers' agreement or agreement by the city and Epitome Energy to, to terminate it or December 31st of 2021. So in order to not leave that gap open between the letter of intent and the developers' agreement, we needed to use that timeline that he provided. And he's not here this evening. I thought he would be, so, um, I apologize for that. He may have been able to answer your question differently, but we did use all of those dates that he provided to us.
And just to clarify, the request, the requests of the city are not promises or confirmed, but things that they will possibly request in the future, correct?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. And that's on page two of four of the letter of intent. Initially, they were listed as obligations of the city and I requested that we change that to requests of the city. These are things that the council has not considered formally. You may have heard about them, talked about them, but there's just simply not enough information yet. The project is not far enough along for us to present a proposal to you or a recommendation from staff. So we also asked that, we included language that Epitome Energy then will provide any relevant data that we need in order to consider this and bring it forward. I will give you one example. Early on in the discussions with Epitome Energy, there was discussions about a reduced water and sewer rate. However, those initial and preliminary water demand uses are very different from the report we got. That's something that we're going to have to be back at the table. At this time with the information I have, I would not recommend that the city reduce the rates to 50%. But those are just things we're still working on with Mr. Egan and his team. You may see requests at various times of several of these things. You may see one of these things at a time. It's really going to depend on how fast the project is driven forward then by Mr. Egan.
And then there was something about a TIF for nine years?
That was one of the, the requests. I've heard that mentioned. There's been no formal discussion that I've been involved in at staff level yet, so we will have to work then with, with Minnesota Deed and possibly Baker Tilly, our financial guides to get that going.
Is the expectation that these requests are decided or completed with this developers' agreement or will these things kind of be ongoing?
Do you mean will they be included in the developers' agreement?
Yeah, is it something that needs to be done then and there or is it still something that can be discussed as they?
I would say that it would be my recommendation to the city council that you would want your developers' agreement to contain all obligations and responsibilities of both parties. I think if you were going to agree to this, you would want to have enough information to have that included in the developers' agreement and know what are the expectations that the city council has voted on, what information you had to make that decision. So there is still quite a bit of, of work to do on that. And as we get information in, we are working on our staff, our building official, our And as we get information in, we are working on our staff, our building official, our public works director, myself. So as we get those things in, we are churning them through as quickly as possible. But at this point, we just don't have enough information to present these to you as a formal recommendation.
Has, has Dennis's team looked at this letter of intent then and?
They drafted it, actually.
Okay, but then you said you changed a few things in there.
Yes, we sent that back, yeah, we did. We sent that back to both him and his legal counsel. They both reviewed it and sent back confirmation that they had agreed with our changes.
Further discussion?
Is there any concern, is it anything make or break on here? Like if one or any of these things are not agreed upon, does that close the project?
Well, I think that would be a discussion. I mean, requests of the city, basically, Amy's going to have to sit down with him and figure out, you know, what he wants or what, what we can afford.
Right.
Right, and what federal state dollars are available to us? The city certainly cannot afford all of these things out of our budget without federal dollars. And there are some things we can apply for, but without having more solid information in the same way we would need to present it to you as the council, we would also need more detailed information to even have a discussion at a federal or state agency to discuss availability of funds. There certainly could be some things on here that may be a higher priority for Epitome Energy than others, but we really haven't had that type of discussion yet.
I like that MIF thing though that we approved earlier. Could they use something like that for any of this?
Um, possibly. We'd have to have some preliminary discussions with Minnesota Deed, possibly on equipment and things like that. Maybe a possibility. We will likely have discussions with, with the state about infrastructure dollars as we talk about some roads and things like that.
Seems like that might be a new tool in the toolbox.
Right, absolutely. We are learning. We're learning quite a bit about that, about that process.
Okay.
Your honor, I, it's been kind of, I'm in favor of Epitome in that, but it's kind of been an issue where we're not receiving enough information. I'm just concerned, as you bring up different things, I just have concerns, but I am in favor of it. But I'm just concerned on some of the stuff not coming through or we're not getting the right information needed.
Councilmember Briggs, I would agree with that. I think, I think the project will be really fantastic for the community. However, we are not going to be able to move forward on our end until the project is moving forward as well. I am a bit concerned about some of the optimistic timelines, but at Mr. Egan's request and at the timelines he provided, we included those. So if, if those don't work out, it would be his, his obligation to come back to you as a council and ask for an amendment?
A little more time or something.
Right, yeah.
And I guess myself, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do that if, if it need to be, because it is a good project for this.
Time doesn't cost anything.
Right, and I think, I think keeping timelines will be helpful to keep the project moving. The city would like to see the project moving. The state wants to see progress before they will discuss certain incentives. So it will be important to have some deadlines set and keep trying to move that forward.
Further discussion? Ashley, can I have a roll call, please?
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Nate.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Platt?
Nate.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jertie?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so what do we got here?
We have a four to two to one. So it does not, no, because you need to have a majority of five.
Yeah, five.
Yes, your honor, it does not pass.
Motion does not carry. Need a vote of five?
Correct.
I guess, you know, it's just a letter of intent. It's nothing written in stone yet.
I, I just, I can't believe that we are not at least letting this go. And it's in, it's in his court now.
Exactly.
All this stuff why we're not helping. Our business is coming to crooks, and this is asinine. Just do not go through.
We asked for a timeline, and he gave us a timeline.
Yeah.
I would just like a little bit more information, personally. It's not that I'm against it, but I feel like, I would like a little bit more information. I just feel like there's been a lot of moving goalposts. There's been a lot of changes in what the product is going to be. I think there's a lot of things there. I'd like to just have a better understanding of this before I made a decision. And I understand that this is a, a holding for the developer agreement, but I just have a couple more questions I'd like to have answers on before I make an educated decision on that vote.
If, if, if we're going to hold it up, then we might have to extend our timelines if we're going to keep holding it up on them.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I, first, I would like to say I respect the vote and how each of you chooses to vote. I believe you're doing that based on how you're representing your constituents. So I am not here to say one way or the other. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. What this, I, I would also recommend if we do not move forward with a letter of intent that we also not consider the land option agreement, but we will get to that next. What can I, would it be helpful if we invited Mr. Egan to speak to you? I apologize, I, I did think he would be here this evening.
He needs to be here for these things and for us to ask questions and stuff like that. That's my.
Would that be what, do I have a, is there a consensus that would that be a good next step for us? To see if we could get Mr. Egan and maybe talk this through a little bit more?
I think there's a lot of things that might have been cleared up that not necessarily you knew or could answer on his behalf. And I think that ultimately, you know, in the end, we want to make sure that we're clear with what we're agreeing to. And so I'd like to have a, a better understanding from his side of the things as well.
Sure, okay. I will get in contact with Mr. Egan tomorrow and see if we can get him on an upcoming agenda for you. And if there's anything additional that I can provide at that time, based on discussions, then I certainly will. Otherwise, I will just ask that he be available for some discussion and maybe talking through some things.
Could, could you give us specifics of what you need answered to, to move ahead?
Well, I think, you know, wondering, like I said earlier, like is there anything on here that is going to stop this project dead in its tracks? Is there things that we need to be very clear about in our letter of intent? You know, when we're talking about that timeline, is the timeline really feasible for what we're expecting from them? I mean, I think that there's enough hesitation in this room with those timelines being viable. And so just having some better understanding of, of us going forward and what we're getting ourselves into, especially in the letter of intent, even if it's only significant until that developer agreement happens.
That, Mayor and council, that has been one of the challenges is what we have for you as far as requests of the city is about as detailed and specific as I am able to give to you right now. I'm, I'm not sure that Mr. Egan can get any more specific than this, but I will certainly ask him to be available to answer that. That's, if we were further, I think we would be closer to an executed developers' agreement. I, as your staff person, do not feel like we are close to even sit down and start nailing things down on a, on a developers' agreement for the very points that you bring up. We are not sure yet without final plans and specifications, those types of things. In what order some of these might need to happen? What may be a priority or something that could severely impact the project versus just rerouting? I'm not sure I can answer those. I'm not certain Mr. Egan can, but I will invite him to do that for you at an upcoming meeting.
Your honor, hopefully this was, this meeting will solve the problem of what, what's going to be happening in the future and some timelines. I'm concerned about the possibility of not having Epitome move forward because we're kind of slowing the process by not letting the negotiations start and go forward in a timely manner. So I hope that we can get him here to explain to us what we're, what we're wondering about, so.
I think he'll be willing to do that. I, I do think this is a good, a good point for us as the city to consider, as well as any developer, providing realistic timelines is most helpful. It's good to be optimistic. But if, if it's not a timeline that we can achieve and there's work on both sides that has to happen once one of these requests starts moving forward, and that may be a discussion that we need to have with Mr. Egan giving us maybe what feels like a little bit more comfortable on our side, and we can ask him to speak to the feasibility on his end of that timeline. That is helpful. And Councilmember Jertie, it does help with that feeling of each, with each conversation, if you have to consider a different timeline, if you could maybe reach out a little bit further. And then if you achieve it sooner, that's fantastic. But if you can set a really solid, realistic timeline, it will be easier for both sides to maybe hit some goals and, and start lining out some tasks on how to get there. And I will communicate that.
Yeah, but we don't know if there could be some regulations that they had to have by the end of this year, you know, in order to get their permitting or whatever. A lot of this stuff, yeah, I, I agree, we don't have the answers, but this isn't holding our feet to the fire for anything. This is just a, a, a letter of intent that they're giving us, and it's, it's kind of a reassuring that, hey, they are going to bring this project. And now you're saying that, you know, you want to know everything about this project. Well, we're never going to know everything about this project.
It's part of business.
Right, it moves along. I mean, and as far as, as what they're going to make or what they're doing, if they're making oil or if they're making tires, that's not really our decision either. That's, that's something, I mean, I, I get it, but they're the ones making the investment. What have, what have we got locked into it here so far? I mean, you know, we've gotten some money for permitting, and if they just drop that, well, we're out that entirely, so.
I mean, I look at it, what's the city attorney's opinion? If you must have looked at this and brought this forward, I mean, you must feel pretty comfortable with bringing it forward.
Yeah.
Right? I mean.
A letter of intent is simply an understanding that you agree to negotiate. That's what it does. It sets out the terms that you will discuss, that you will hopefully reach consensus on, hopefully get agreement on. As it says in the letter, it does not bind anybody to do anything other than negotiate. Those negotiations may break down. They may never happen. This letter of intent is based upon those timelines that were set by Epitome Energy. So I can tell you, a letter of intent, we did go back and forth on that, quite frankly. They sent a letter of intent. Your city administrator reviewed it. I reviewed it. We reviewed it together. All it says is, we agree to negotiate on these items. There may never be an agreement, but it's got it, you either have an agreement by December thirty first, 2021, or you have nothing.
All right.
And that's why, that's why, trying to explain that, we need to move forward on this thing, get the information so that we know what we're going to be doing or not doing, so.
But the items that are in that letter of intent, you understand, the city is only stating what it understands the request to be. There are no obligations on the city other than to negotiate those particular items. Doesn't mean when you negotiate, you get an agreement, but you got to negotiate.
Can I change my vote?
Nope.
How can we do this if someone had voted?
Any what? You have to ask for reconsideration.
You can ask for reconsideration.
Right.
Sure.
It'd have to be somebody that voted in that.
Someone who voted no or abstained, whoever those people might be, can ask that the vote be reconsidered.
So can I ask a question? So if they are not meeting the timelines, or at least the first timeline where the letter of intent then is dissolved, correct, by December thirtieth, my understanding?
December thirty first, 2021, if there is not an agreement.
We don't know that unless we negotiate.
If there's no agreement, this proposal dissolves, or by mutual agreement.
Yeah. But it's not, the requests are just requests, not proposals.
They are. They're, they're requests of the city.
Corky, could you, I know we're not to the item yet, but I do think it will be important. What then would the implication be on the land option agreement? It also says December thirty first of 2020 on that same timeline.
Correct, correct. Okay. If you don't proceed with a letter of intent, the proposal, the land option agreement makes no sense to move forward with because the letter of intent says you're going to negotiate in hopes of getting a developers' agreement, and the developers' agreement would incorporate?
The land option.
The land option.
Right.
So I, I understand hesitancy. I agree with our city administrator. Had a number of discussions about this. This project needs more definition for all of you, more specific. You can't get every little specificity incorporated. You need to negotiate. Okay? But there are some very tight timelines, in my opinion, for Epitome, very tight. Essentially four months to get all of this negotiated and in a developers' agreement. You want items like how much water, what's it going to cost? Is there going to be a vacation of a street? Is, what is going to happen so that the city knows what is expected of it? And if you look at this more than once, it says a thirty million bushel per year crush facility.
I will say, Mr. Egan has not instilled a ton of confidence in me up until this, this point. I will ask for a reconsideration of vote if this is just that point. I guess I, from what I was reading, felt that that was reading differently, but with the clarification, I would prefer to reconsiderate a vote.
Excuse me, before we can consider that, could I ask Amy, as far as the timelines go, are they feasible for our city or not, do you think?
Well, basically, the ball is in Dennis Egan's court right now.
Right.
So it doesn't matter if he doesn't beat him, then.
This is a starting point for, for both parties.
Right, right, I understand that.
I will say there is an ample amount of work to do to have a full developers' agreement by December thirty first. That is staff review, staff discussion in front of you, possibly feedback on certain things. I'm not going to say it can't happen, and we would make every effort on city staff's side as soon as we, and we have, as soon as we get information, we route it to the appropriate people, whether that's our public works director, our building official, the city attorney, a phone call to Mr. Egan, those things. We would work as fast as we could. Now, if we got down and tried to negotiate on November fifteenth, it kind of depends, I think, and in my opinion, how quickly we can begin.
From, from just a document standpoint, one, the letter of intent. Please understand, that's what it is. You intend to negotiate. Nothing's set other than you'll negotiate. Two, to get a development agreement takes a significant amount of work on staff time, significant amount. It does take legal work to get this language worked out. You're not talking about a ten cent operation. This is reportedly three hundred million dollars with significant potential responsibility by the city, by the state, by federal money. I mean, this is a big deal. And we want to be very, very cautious on the part of the city.
But even with that being said, to me, okay, you got December thirty first. I don't know if that was a reason, some reason that they had to meet a deadline or something.
That was completely.
On their part.
Councilman Ved Bratton, their deadline.
But to me, okay, if they come up December first, and we've been working on different things, and there's one or two left, and it goes to January thirty first, that isn't a deal breaker to me.
You understand, this is negotiation.
If I, if I may, if we go past December thirty first, we're back before you if he needs a request. That is not something that staff would make a decision to extend unilaterally. That would be a council decision, and, and that would probably depend on the situation and what information we could provide you on that.
In your opinion, though, I mean, that should happen throughout this whole process for the simple fact that we're not, we're not going to be set in stone on everything that he's got, nor, nor is he going to be set in stone on what he's going to do.
Right.
He's probably going to come in front of us fifty, you know, in 2024, whenever they break ground in this, or.
That, that is entirely possible. However, the developers' agreement should have those most significant items included, outlined, agreed upon, just to hold everyone to their responsibilities and obligations.
One hundred percent, the developers' agreement sets some specificity about responsibilities, and not just some in broad parameters. You've all been a part of this, you've seen this happen. There is a definite lack of specificity on the part of the potential developer. The city needs that, and in order to allow that specificity, you need to negotiate. And this letter of intent.
Sets to do that.
Does just that, says we will negotiate. You all want as much information as possible. As one example, fifty percent reduction in water rates. No one has any. No one has any idea what that means at this point.
Right.
But the negotiations can continue as long as there is viable feedback. Get some specificity, so you can analyze the position that you have as a city. We want to protect the city, we want to encourage this development as much as possible realistically. And this letter of intent, if signed by each party, says, look, we're going to negotiate. That's what we've obligated ourselves to do. May not get an agreement, may not hit the timelines. If you don't hit the timelines, you're back to where we are right now.
I understand that, you know, these timelines can move, and I get that. But I feel that it would instill more confidence in us as a city or the decision makers in this regard if they were more realistic, and that, you know, you know, it's better to under-promise and over-deliver than the other way around. And just keeping that in mind as we kind of go forward in, in those conversations, especially since there is such a timeline.
That could be a negotiation.
Isn't that better for us, though, if, if he's offering to try and get some things done sooner than later than if he would have put down December 31st of 2024? And now, now you're hung out there for two years.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that.
This year, it moves it along, I believe.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. But at the same time, I mean, if it's a couple of months off, that's very different than four years, right? So, I just think that, and just this whole process, it'd be nice to have a little bit more.
I would hope they keep an open mind on this whole process, because it's, I mean, a business this big coming in does not happen overnight. I mean, on his end and on our end, there's a lot to go into it.
Yeah.
We just need to find the baby steps, I, I get that. But at the end of the day, we just, you know, we almost threw this thing out the window today.
I think, I think that during
I don't think we threw it out the window, but.
Your honor.
We're not very inviting as a city by not voting for a letter of intent.
Well, I think it's, it's more about the description. And like I said, I would like to request a reconsideration.
I think that, that could be satisfied during the negotiations, though. I think we have to negotiate, otherwise it's going to take long.
Myself, though, I think if you needed more information, I think that should have been given to Amy today to try and get a hold and make sure that Dennis was coming, or could have been zoomed in or whatever we do now.
Well.
So, I mean, she deserves that also to, if, if it's possible to give a heads up so that we don't end up stalled like this, like you say, you know, kind of not, not full.
Well, I have a better understanding with the letter of intent, so I'm willing to, if it's possible, to change my vote.
There's a procedure to do that, someone voted
You have to make a motion.
negatively or abstained, you need to make a motion to reconsider.
Christie, Christie made that motion.
Yeah, I made the motion to reconsider.
I'll second that motion.
Would you, since Christie did a no vote, can I ask for?
I did abstain.
Yep, you did a no, yes, so you didn't do a no vote. So then what would you, yep.
Oh, um, aye.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to change my vote from nay to aye.
Okay.
I'll make my motion to change from nay to in favor. So, motion carries to move forward with the letter of intent.
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry, you done scribbling?
A lot of right.
I'll let you finish, I won't rush you.
Item 8.08 is a resolution to approve the Epitome Energy LLC revised land option agreement, your honor.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution? I'll make that motion.
Tom. And then Clayton.
Clayton and Tom?
Yep, Tom first and then Clayton.
Tom, okay, thank you. Amy, again, please.
The land, the revised land option agreement, as we, as we discussed, does incorporate the timelines that Mr. Egan and his legal counsel provided in the letter of intent. It is substantially in the same form that was before the council in May of 2020. Let me look down here. We did include the updated legal description of the updated boundary that council approved at a prior meeting. The map is up on the wall, the map is included as well. And I did ask the city attorney if he would just speak a little bit about how this land option agreement and how the city is protected within that, and if certain things happen or don't happen, what that means for you.
Thank you. This option agreement is just that, it's an option to purchase this described property of 60.01 acres. The legal description was corrected, and there are protections in here. Again, the same timelines are in the option that are in the letter of intent. But this needs, this land can only be purchased if there's a development agreement, a developer's agreement, fully negotiated, accepted by this council and by the developers by December 31st, 2021. In addition, in item number 12, there have been questions about indemnification. And in item number 12, you'll see that there is indemnification and a whole harmless, as good as that is with respect to Epitome Energy, if there is any disruption in our cash farm lease that we presently have in place right now. There is a cash farm lease on all of the property in addition to what you see diagrammed. If there's any disruption in that, any change in that lease, we are indemnified to the ability of Epitome Energy to pay for that particular problem and difficulty. Again, December 31st, 2021, before this land option can be executed, there has to be a fully executed developer's agreement. And that development agreement in item number six says that they will provide a development agreement, and they shall construct not less than a 30 million bushel per acre soybean crush facility.
Per year.
Per year, 30 million bushels per year soybean crush facility. That was specifically indicated in our response to Mr. Egan as to what type of facility and how much.
I think it was 30, 30 million bushel has been all along, pretty much. I, I think in the start, maybe there was a
But this is in response, and I want you all to understand very distinctly, these proposals in the previously discussed letter of intent and in this document have been suggested and put forward by Epitome Energy LLC in consultation with Dennis Egan and his team.
I will say, in a, in a recent, I just saw this today, in a recent press release, he did mention it being a 42 million bushel per year. But this does say not less than a 30 million, and we don't have any, we don't have any official documentation to put forth before you to say for sure where he'll land in, in between that.
At, at least 30.
Right, yeah.
But as part of that development agreement, understand, before this can be executed, or we can get a notice of intent to deliver, that developer's agreement has to be executed based upon specific negotiations with the city.
And I think, do you mean before he can exercise his option?
Before he can exercise the option to purchase the land.
We can execute this document, but before he can exercise the land option, a, a developer's agreement would need to be executed.
So, there are a lot of, I mean, there's four months. Pretty significant negotiation terms, especially when you look out at the requests of the city in the letter of intent. City hasn't bound itself to anything at this point, other than to negotiate.
Further discussion. Ashley, can I have a roll call, please?
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerde.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on.
Item 8.09 is a resolution to approve a variance for Our Lady of Sorrows Church, your honor.
Motion to approve this resolution.
I make that motion, your honor.
Thank you, Clayton, second.
I'll second it, your honor.
That Tom, kind of gave me the look. Discussion.
Greg, can you tell us a little bit more about this?
If you look at the map on the screen, the parcel that's noted there, I have to look that up, is 82.01941.02. It's basically a split parcel, but when I say that, it was previously split and it's been combined. So the portion where they're going to do the addition is on the west side of that. It's located in a commercial zoning right now, and it's right adjacent to 102 residential. So it's facing Washington Street to the west. If you could go to that next picture. The basic proposed building expansion, if you look on the wings on each side of the building, it's currently 25 feet off the property line as it exists. So basically, all they're asking is to put that 25 feet further towards the west or southwest corner of the property. And if you look at the, like I say, those two angled wings on each side, they were 25 feet to be, to existing. But the previous, or the setbacks that's required is 90 feet and 75 feet, which are off the city and the residential limits. But it's, the planning commission reviewed it, they did suggest and approve or recommend that it be approved. So, if there's any other questions on it, or?
Do you have any concerns?
Not specifically, no. I think it's a, it's an open area to the, to the west of Washington Avenue, so there really is only one residential lot in that. There was no complaints or concerns raised that, in specific to that building expansion.
And it doesn't, it doesn't create any sightline problems with the road or anything like that, does it?
Actually, I think it's very, it, it kind of melds in with existing property. I, I don't think, as far as the Washington Avenue, no, there shouldn't be no concerns with sightlines or view marks.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Have a roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Platt. Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerde.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.10 is a resolution to approve the conservant, or, excuse me, to approve the conservant? Come on, conservation here, Ashley, oh my gosh, you can tell it's a long night. Reserve program, contract located at the Nature View Estates, Platt, your honor.
Motion to approve this resolution.
I'll move, your honor.
Thank you, Delane, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, get historical.
This is the park that was donated to the city. You dedicated it within the last year, it's been since I've been here, but very early on as a permanent park. We received a notice in the mail that it was part of the CRP. I personally was not aware of that. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if you guys were, but it is, and we now own it. So there are certain requirements. We did have to turn over the deed, they need updated city officials. We are a public entity, so we cannot receive the CRP payments. There's annual reporting requirements, and I believe it's about $7,900 if you chose to buy out the CRP. Corky, did I miss anything, or you may have something to add to that? I don't remember seeing that in the development agreement, I have read that, so this was a bit of a surprise to me.
Yes, I think it was a surprise to all of us. The one thing that we should indicate is, even though we can't receive the payments because we're a municipal entity, we still have the legal obligations to take care of the land, either put in a cover crop or keep it mowed and keep the weeds down. That's our responsibility. It is nine acres, 9.28 acres. In discussions with Farm Services, they said that really is your obligation. Keep it mowed, keep the weeds down so it doesn't spread to adjoining property, unless you want to put a cover crop in, but I don't know why you would.
Are we mowing that? Are we, are we mowing that now?
Oh, we have not started it yet.
But that's would be, that's what's required.
That's the north pond now, right?
There's, there's a second one that has not yet been dedicated to the city.
Is there anything on that one that we know of?
Well, not that we know of yet, but it's not needed to us yet, so.
How much longer?
Four years, 2024, so we have '21, '22, '23, and '24. And then the CRP contract expires, and we have no further obligation under CRP.
What would be the payoff on that, if we had to pay it off?
$7,928, I believe.
Would that be an, something that, far as mowing and maintaining, is that something that over three, four years going to cost us more?
If you paid that money, you'd be out of the contract, and then you'd have no responsibility. I, that's something that's not, I can't answer.
But if we mow it, I mean, it's going to look a heck of a lot better than all the weeds that have been growing up in it. I guess I'd, I'd say to mow it.
Imagine we'd mow it anyway, even if we're out of the contract, to keep it respectable. I said, I would imagine we'd mow it anyway, and make it look respectable since we own it.
Isn't it supposed to be a park anyways?
Yeah.
It's dedicated permanently as a park.
It was supposed to be like a natural habitat park, you know, the grass. But I think there was supposed to have been some wild grass planted in there or something, but I'd just mow it and forget it.
So it's the only obligation really is to fill out this paperwork for the next four years?
And then?
And mow it.
I'd say mow it.
Yeah.
So if we, as long as we own it, we couldn't rent it out?
I don't believe so. And if you did, you can't get anything for it. And I don't know, I don't know that you would rent out something dedicated as a public park either. So, that was part of the transfer agreement in the developer's agreement, that it would be permanently dedicated as park space.
Can I ask when we, when you talk about the dollar amount as being that we would have to pay in order to get out of the contract, is that the full payment for the, was it eight years of CRP?
Mr. Reynolds?
How long is it in CRP for? Sorry, Corky.
That pays you through right now, through the time it started in 2014, what it has been paid, and then interest accruing of $127. If you paid it right now, you'd have no further obligation.
Sure, but what I'm saying, though, is that the previous owner received that money already for the years prior to that.
Oh, yes, yes, it's been paid on a yearly basis.
So we're paying back what they would have received plus?
What they did receive.
Right.
Plus interest.
I'd say just mow it and get it.
Yes, if any department heads would like to weigh in, please make your way to the podium. Thank you.
My understanding of CRP, just from an outsider looking in, is the only way you can mow CRP is if there's noxious weeds in it. So you have to get approval from the USDA to mow CRP, because it is native grasses, so.
What's a noxious weed?
What's that?
What's a noxious weed, a thistle?
So like if it's full of thistle. And like, they opened it to bailing for farm cattlemen this year. But I don't believe you can just go mow CRP, so we should look into that.
Okay, we will do that.
Thank you, Brandon.
Is there allowing them to bail that stuff? I mean, can we look into that too, to see if somebody would be willing to come in and bail it, if that's available?
We will explore all options available to us.
From a maintenance standpoint, for us to go in and mow it, if it is a possibility to mow it, is not going to be a big weight on our budget or anything like that, because we're going to be, we're just, we would just come either on our way to the arena or on our way back from the arena, we would just hit it. Nine, nine acres in the long run for us is really not going to be, to keep it mowed down, is not going to be a big.
Have you still got that big mower behind the tractor?
No.
No, you don't have that.
No, we would just, we would have to use our, our big John Deere's, or with the way the way this is set up around the pond and everything, this would be another case where that slope mower would come in, will come in handy to get around that. And then when we get to the flat spots, then we'd be able to use the regular mowers. So, for us, it's not going to be, if it is mowable with, you know, by what Brandon said, for us, it's not going to be a big deal.
Right, because there has been some issues this year with a lot of farmers with CRP that wanted to mow. They're, and hay their CRP because of lack of grass out there, that the USDA wasn't allowing them to until a certain point, so that is, that is a concern. There's got to be a thistle or two in there, though. Well.
It'd be interesting to hear what they have to say.
We will check into that. The fact of the matter is.
Further discussion?
How did we get it?
Ashley, roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Platt.
Aye.
Bedbroughton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jerdy.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Amy.
Getting hoarse from all my talking. You guys have to listen to me some more. Would like to say I enjoyed my first Oxcart Days experience this past week. So, we were out most days checking out some things. It was fun. The kids and I went. Thank you to the city staff that puts in a lot of time and effort in hauling things to the arena during the rain, and it was warm in there, but I think we should take time to be thankful that we did not have to cancel those days events. And, I don't know, it helped me sweat off a few pounds probably while I was in there. Get heated up by the Hershey's. The smores thing looked like it was a really big hit when I was there. It was busy the whole time. I enjoyed the street dance and the band, so thank you to everyone who put time in and who came out and enjoyed that. I saw a lot of people I knew and a lot of people I didn't. We are, city staff has been working really hard and tirelessly getting things ready to present to you for budget, so we will have some stuff to go over tonight. We will move through that. Most of them should go pretty quickly with one little bit lengthier one at the end. And then, as I sent out to you, we will be trying to meet on some off Mondays, starting a little bit earlier to get through some of the heftier budgets for you, so we're not here till past our bedtimes. That is all I have.
Thank you. Start with Scott, got anything?
Don't forget to come to the podium, department heads, if you have any announcements. Thank you.
Just the, just wanted to reiterate what everybody else has said about Oxcart Days. The staff that we had, we have with the city is incredible, between the police, the fire, everybody, and the Oxcart people. It was absolutely a joy to get it done, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Scott. Greg, anything?
We'll record your name, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, for coming to the podium.
Brandon, do you have anything?
Super well-prepared tonight. We had a failure at lift station three on the pressure line, so that's been consuming a lot of the public's works time in the last couple of weeks. We finally got it, we band-aided it back together, but we got it permanently fixed, knock on wood, permanently fixed today. So, it just, jobs like that are a challenge, because you got to stay ahead of the water that's coming to you to make sure that you don't have to pump it to the river and then get it done in a timely manner, so.
Bren, is that our sanitary sewer?
Yep.
Which is important to all of us. It's one of those things you do not see, but you always want it to be working properly. So, thank you.
Everything from the north end goes to three. So, we were fighting all the water from half the town today. So, it took the water, the street, and the sewer guys to fix it. So, it, it was a big job, but, but we got it taken care of. The local jobs are, hopefully they'll be putting the curb in on Stevens and Grant next week, and then hopefully they'll be, have a blacktop the following. They're getting the sidewalk and curb work done on the federal job. That one's, they, they have, I think, substantial completion on that one. It's the fifteenth of September for seventeenth, something like that. So, they're coming up on that, but they're working towards it. I'm sure forgetting something, but I'll mention it next meeting here, so.
You know, I mentioned it last time too, Brandon, but is there any possible way, if they're not going to be working on a street, to take and move their road sign over until they're working on it? I see people going around them signs all the time, and there's nobody working on the street.
Yeah, I, it's, you know, it, like I said last meeting, it's a double-edged sword, because you, you, they're, they're in and out of there, but, you know, like, we opened up North Central for the parade, but there was still, you know, there's black dirt missing from the edge of the sidewalks, and we're just trying to keep as many people off of those areas. And, and I'd plan to, hopefully plan a little bit better so that we're not, you know, this year, you're working on Riverside, North Central, Elm. I'm going to look at the areas we're going to hit so that we're not so congregated, hopefully, in the future. That, that's what's causing the issue in those areas right now. You know, if we could keep a major vein through an addition without construction, it, it just wasn't possible this year, so.
That's what I mean. I know even myself, that one day, I was coming downtown, I, I went to Forest, that was closed. I went to Central, that was closed. I went to Summit, that was closed. I finally went around to Victoria, and I mean, there was nobody working on any of them.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Yeah, and with the roadmap, I've tried to stay on top of it for keeping the suggested route as the guys move around, but.
Is this, is this about average? Are we, are we over above normal road construction for the city at one time?
This is above average, because you have the federal contract. So, you know, the federal contract is, I think, is over a million dollars, and they're just mill overlays. So, it's probably, I would say, at least five times more than normal. So, the next three years will be much lighter.
I will repin that map to the top of our Facebook page. I believe we have it on our website as well.
Thank you, Brandon. I'd like to line up. Chad.
Thank you, Your Honor, counsel. I've been working very hard on budget for 2021. In fact, I'll have a short proposed budget presentation for you at Ways and Means Committee tonight for information technology. Been looking to troubleshoot a unforeseen issue that came up with our virtualization, AKA our server infrastructure, and I am scheduled to work with a managed service partner this Wednesday to hopefully remedy that issue. And then some exciting news, I am looking curtain on a new VPN technology, the ability for staff to remote into our network while they're away from City Hall. We'll be bringing that online very shortly. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chad.
Thank you.
Paul, I was going to save you for last. You didn't like being first.
Well, I changed my mind. That was two weeks ago. Real quick, again, to repeat what's been said, thanks to all the departments, the guys at the Police Department for Oxcart Days, but I also want to specifically thank Jess and the entire Oxcart Committee. They start meeting months and months ahead of it, and they really do a lot of hard work and come up with a lot of good ideas. So, that's a big part of why it's so successful. I missed last meeting to mention that, the first part of August, Becky has been with us, seventeen years. She started in about two thousand four. And then the only other thing is just to let you know that we have another candidate interview coming up. Received another application today, so we just continue with the process. But we're not alone. We really aren't. I think right now the Sheriff's Office has three openings. It's just, it's all over, so we'll just keep working through it. Any questions?
Are you just one short now?
Right now, on patrol, we're too short. Well, because our, Lauren Edigold starts next Monday, but he's got, you know, roughly the twelve weeks of training, so we'll be short that spot in a position until he's done. But then Taylor Zanata went to State Patrol, so we've got that opening right now, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Jim.
I was just saving the best for last.
Yeah, no, I got Ryan yet.
All right. Well, Ryan topped me out again, so. Just a few things. I mean, obviously going to thank everybody for all their participation in the Oxcart Days, and of course, the committee and all the street and city workers. And it was very, very nice, very successful. And we got rain. We have to do the fireworks. That was a big deal, so that was really nice. Just let people know that the Fire Department will be doing some drivers' training around town, especially maybe up on the northeast, or, yeah, northeast corner of town on Wednesday night, so there'll be a little extra traffic around. If you see a lot of vehicles moving around, that's planned. We did get through all the schools. All the schools have been inspected, and they, of course, hear me, they all look very nice. So, we do go through those annually, make sure that they're going to be safe for our kids to go in there, and the school staff does a wonderful job of fixing any of the deficiencies we come up, and they look really good. And we have a safety committee meeting tomorrow morning at eight fifteen. All the department heads and representatives from each department get together and talk about safety items that we want to look into, so we'll be having that tomorrow morning at eight fifteen. And just need to thank Janine Windells for everything that she's done for the city, and she'll be missed, and best of luck to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan.
I can't say it'd be the best for last, but we are still continuing with the audit. We did get an email today from Kim with some of the closing year-end entries to do to two thousand twenty, and with that, then we should be able to go through and get our final numbers for the reserves. And we have been digging into all of the budgets, and so I know it's been a cumbersome process for all department heads and for Amy as we go through this and coming up with another plan for next year to make this whole process simpler and better working papers and stuff. So, I think next year will be a much better year for us as we prepare. But the numbers that we'll have later tonight for Ways and Means, I mean, we've put a lot of time into these budgets, a lot of thinking, and I think with the involvement of each department head in their own budgets this year too, has made a big difference. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, Ryan. Rich Ang from Witsa.
No, sir. Brandon, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Start with Wayne, anything?
You've heard enough. I'm good.
Thank you. Kristi.
I also want to thank Jess, if she's still here. Yep, hey, Jess. And the whole committee for Oxcart Days, it was wonderful. It was really great, especially having small kids. They really enjoyed going and doing everything. I want to say a big shout out to Scott, too. I know it was really hot in the sports center, but you guys did your best in making it cooler, and we appreciated just how responsive you guys were, so we really appreciated your hard work there as well. I did get to be the very tail end of the DCDP meeting about Chalk It Up, and unfortunately was not able to make the full meeting, but in filling in, things seem to go smoothly right now for the Chalk It Up event, which is September eleventh. They are still looking for some possible featured artists to do some chalk drawings, so if anybody knows anybody who's talented in those areas, please send them my way or Shirley Iverson's way to have us approach those individuals. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Steve?
I just want to thank everybody for the prayers and the, all the support I got. Tell you what, that's why we live in a small community. It's amazing the stuff I got back from social media to Texas and everything else. So, I want to thank you to everybody for that, and I just want to give a shout out to Crooks and Having River View Health. Having that facility in a small town like this is amazing. When you go from in there to out of there in thirty-five minutes, that's, that's impressive. So, I want to shout out to River View and thank everybody for all their thoughts and prayers. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Steve. Clayton? I'd like to thank the Oxcart Committee. They did an outstanding job. The attendance was crazy. The Fire Department, that had their pancake feet, I was sat there for a couple of hours, and it was nonstop, steady flow all the way through to the Fire Department handle, and kept up with them. So, thank you to everybody that participated in that, and look forward to next year. Thanks, Clayton. Don?
I would like to thank Nell DeBoer and also Jess Pinkston for the excellent job that coordinating this, this is a community Oxcart Days. I think it's one of the best Oxcart Days you've had for a long time. I know I walked the parade, and I think they were three deep, the lines were three deep, and we had four hundred Hershey bars that we gave out, and the Brimber Bank also had a bunch of Hershey bars. So, we were, we ran out of Hershey bars right by the courthouse, was, wasn't even halfway into the parade, but there were a lot of people there, and this is what the community's all about, you know, getting along and having a good time. And I think the Police Department did a good job, great job, actually. There weren't any real big incidences that I knew of and so forth. So, thank you all for, everyone in this room, making Crooks in a better place to live. It's a great place to live. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Delane?
Yep, just reiterate what everybody's saying about Oxcart Days. Great job by the committee and the city staff, so great time. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom?
Oxcart Days was pretty good, and all the UMC students are back again, so there's more people around, and everything's going good.
Thank you. Also, it's all been said here, but it was a fantastic week with Oxcart, just talking to people, you know, having that year with COVID and everybody sheltered in place. They were just happy that this was back, and they enjoyed it and had a great time. So, hats off to the Oxcart Committee, especially Jess. Wonderful job. Okay, just a reminder, there is Ways and Means to follow shortly. If nothing else, come before council, we are adjourned.